Apparently not.
Call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's hard to believe, but welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon will note that all council members are present. We've got Councilor Malloy, Council President Wilhelm here in the chambers. We've got Councilors Thorson, Borders, Wolf, and Anthony joining us via Zoom. Under announcements, you have one announcement. Winterfest will look a little different this year with the Holiday Lights Drive-Thru Tour this Friday, December 4th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The parking lot will be transformed into a winter wonderland where you can see the holiday lights, collect crafts for the kids, enjoy Christmas carols, and wave to Santa from the comfort of your own vehicles. The fire department will also be on site collecting donations for their food drive. A map of the route can be found on the city's website, postfallsidaho.org. And do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Do we have any declarations of conflict or ex parte contacts and site visits? And I should check. Al, Lynn, Carrie, Steve, you guys can hear us all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes for the November 17th, 2020 city council meeting. Item B is payables, November 10th, 2020 through November 23rd, 2020. And item C is Green Meadows North Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement.
Are there any questions on perhaps the shortest consent calendar?
I think it is. The shortest one I've ever read.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion seconds for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Tonight, we do have one public hearing, and that is the Cecil Road vacation. And who is presenting on that? There's Mr. Manley. John, can you hear us all right? Open the public hearing.
Joe. Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm. The Cecil Road Right-Away Vacation, case file 52020. The applicant is Dennis and Michelle Bush. The request is to review and approve a vacation for a portion of Cecil Road Right-Away. You can see here, the general proximity of this request is the dead end of Cecil Road, south of Mullen Avenue, a little bit northwest of the Highway 41 interchange at I-90. You can see it up butts I-90 here. It's in between the storage container facility here and DMV. What you see here is the legal description of this area. I want to denote that the, this Allen Park Business Center, this right-of-way was created as part of this plat for the Allen Business Park. You can see in the staff report that staff denoted that typically, or it may be, granted to the plating, the platter of this area. So if you were to vacate it, that this could go to the, to the easterly property. Oftentimes, you end up with, when a right-of-way gets vacated, half goes to one, half goes to the other. Because oftentimes, when you see the center line here, you end up with a right-of-way on both sides of the center line. So some would go to one, some would go to the other. In this case, it would go to the easterly property being the DMV site. Also, in the staff report, we had some context-oriented type comments to the, I have it in red here, the area being requested for the vacation. But to the east, you have the Highway 41 interchange. In 2023, this is slated to be revised and reconfigured. So staff commented that this corridor may be utilized to help augment or accent that project down the road. Potentially, maybe they use it to reroute, who knows? But if we gave it away today, we would forego that opportunity. Additionally, the, to the south of I-90, we have a growing residential district in that area with additional rooftops. That corridor may be utilized down the road for a pedestrian corridor. If needed, to get residents from the south to the north, we get additional commercial services on the north. So overall, staff commented that it may be premature at this time to entertain it. It may be more feasible down the road, once there's more knowns. Also, looking at the agencies that were routed. The Vista, they were cited in that staff report as saying that if you did go down the path of vacating the right-of-way, that they would want to have a utility easement within that section for their needs. That pretty much wraps up staff's commentary regarding this proposal. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Any questions for John?
Yeah, Alan?
John, what happened to the westerly, the western side? Has it already been vacated?
The way I have interpreted the, the plating of being a Post Falls irrigated track, that this more likely is a remnant piece that's never been platted. So we'd never got that right-of-way with it. Otherwise, the right-of-way line would have been going north-south along this line for a net sum of about 80.
Okay.
Any other questions, Al?
That's my only question for right now.
Thank you. Hearing no others, does the applicant wish to speak?
I believe she's on.
Can you hear me?
We can. Name for the record, please.
Michelle Bush.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so regarding Mr. Manley's concerns with the need of the right-of-way for some time in the future, or during the 41 reconstruction with I-90, being Cecil so close to the construction site of Highway 41 and I-90, it would not be beneficial for one lane traffic to be able to exit at that point. Cecil is already congested with the amount of traffic that it is experiencing with the local businesses, mainly Walmart, and to now be adding additional traffic from Highway 90 onto it. With the traffic light at Cecil and Mullen, you're going to actually incur buildup that is probably going to back up onto I-90 past the 41 interchange. The existing Seltice exit, which is less than a quarter of a mile from Cecil, would be of the best use for hopefully rerouting traffic off of I-90. Anybody that is north and west of the 41 interchange, when this construction project starts, will most definitely avoid this area altogether and stay on the north arteries, as arterials, as they try to get past Post Falls or even into downtown Post Falls. We recognize the fact that there is some residential improvement and building going on on the south side, down by Spencer. But really, with the new 41 interchange and the pedestrian underpass that's going in, adding another bridge over I-90 within a matter of a few feet, what, a few hundred feet, simply would not be beneficial when you consider the cost to the city of obtaining the rights to putting in an overpass, considering the height restrictions that you're going to need if you're going to be doing a bridge overpass, the properties that are going to be involved, and then the city obtaining those properties. I don't believe there are any right-of-ways on the west side where the house and the hotel are at right now. So being pedestrian or even turning a bridge for traffic would be pretty expensive to the city by moving all of those structures and businesses. At this time, that particular section is, we've had to post no parking signs because vehicles are being abandoned. We were out there just the other day looking at the area. There's quite a bit of trash and debris. In the summertime, it is a little bit of a hazard with potential fire because the weeds grow pretty high. We did notice some used drug paraphernalia out there. So it's not the city's best benefit for this land to just sit there completely in the state of condition that it is right now.
Ma'am, I believe I read that you have no intention of building anything over, but what your plan would be, would be to asphalt or pave it just to clean it up. Is that correct?
That is correct. The current tenants, which is Trailers Plus, they have been there for, oh, golly, I think like 10 years. They really need it for additional parking. They would like to be able to utilize the existing property that we have that is fenced for their trailers, and then have the customers and the employees be able to park on some nice pavement as opposed to a bunch of mud. But no structures will be built.
Okay. Excuse me. Any questions for the proponent?
Mayor. So Michelle, are your, are there employees now using it for parking? You say they're parking in the mud. Are they parking on this property now?
Yes, they are. Well, before COVID, as it is right now, hi Linda, as it is right now, they are scheduling appointments. But once we get past the COVID and they're actually having customers and employees back on site, the employees are actually parking over there so that the trailer company can utilize the paved part of the property for their trailers, and the customers are also parking over there.
Any other questions? Al, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is, well, it's not really a question for Mrs. Bush, but is there any other alternatives? I mean, I, I hear what she's saying. I don't disagree with what she's saying. But is there any other alternatives where we could grant an easement of sorts, where we don't give up the property? We don't vacate it, but we could let them use it? And then if we ever needed it back, we'd just say, hey, sorry, we didn't know this was going to happen, but we need it back.
We'll let Mr. Wilson comment on that. One of my thoughts was, if staff feels it's premature to give it up at this point, but it's a issue of trying to clean it up, then I think if the city owns it, it would be incumbent on the city to make sure it is cleaned up and, and kept in that condition. But let's defer to Mr. Wilson.
Unless we gave it to him as a license.
You stole my thunder, so. We could certainly grant a license to them. Essentially, it's an agreement that allows them to use it for a period of time. It's revocable at the point in time that the city would need to use that going forward. That's something that we could, can consider, put together and bring back to you if that's the direction you wanted to go. I did want to comment quickly on something that John touched on. Because this property was platted by the lot to the east, under the statute, that should be, in theory, the place that this property would be revert back to, would be the persons that dedicated it. The, the theory is, is that when you dedicate property for public use, that you're giving it to the public for so long as the public has a use for it. When the public doesn't have a use for it anymore, it should go back to the person or to the, the chain of title that dedicated that. The statute does allow you to make a finding that essentially says it's in the best interest to do something else, but that's the starting point, that it should, as a starting point at least for the discussion, go back to the property that dedicated it.
Okay. I was in touch with the medical center, and they have no interest in that property, and they were willing to give that up if it was something that we were going to need to have to provide. Their only requirement is that we did not build on it, which we told them it was not our intention to build on it. If it is the city's decision to either license or give us a temporary use of that, I guess that would be okay as long as we can still make improvements to it so that it is usable for us. I guess it would be financially more beneficial to us because we wouldn't be paying taxes on it then.
Okay. Linda, you have another comment?
Yeah, so Warren, if the city were to give them a license for the use of it, would they be able to pave it?
Oh, we could probably work that out.
But then if the city decided we needed it back for a public use, then they just lose all the money they spent paving and improving, basically, right?
Potentially. I mean, typically, when you have a, an agreement to allow the public to use, or excuse me, allow someone that's private to use public property, typically, you give them notice that you have a project coming up, that you now have use of that property. It's their option to remove the improvements. You typically see that in something like a, a building that they can take down and move. But if it's something that's affixed, it typically would come back to us.
Steve?
Not have to pay to remove the improvements, then?
Probably not. It's, I can't give definitive answers until we work something out. But, but if, depending on what we're talking about, if it's just asphalt, probably not.
Quick question, Warren. We're getting a lot of comments. Are we out of order, out of order here? Should we see if there's anybody wishing to testify and have these questions after the fact?
So I think this is okay because it gives people a chance to comment on what we're talking about.
Okay, so it is right. Steve, go ahead.
Well, my thought was, could we charge whatever their fees would be to lease or pay for that license, be offset by any improvements they would make, so there would be kind of a zero cost to both parties? Is that something that you could work out with the understanding that we needed it? Then the city would go back in and remove those improvements at the city's cost.
So in theory, we could do that. Normally, the licenses that I've seen in the past have essentially been no cost.
We have no charge. Any other comments at this point?
I have one more question. And so, Warren, if, if we were thinking that we wanted to grant a license, then could we stipulate in that agreement that we would talk to the easterly property prior to granting that license, since that's the way it is normally done? That it would go to them first? I mean, I understand that Michelle Bush talked to them, but wouldn't it be beneficial for the city to talk to them as well?
So I think if, if we were doing a straight-up vacation, I think my recommendation would be, subject to, to your decision, would be vacate it to the property to the east. And if they have no use for it, they could then give it to, to the property to the west in whatever form or fashion they wanted to deal with that in. If it's just a license, and I think we could kick the tires on that and make sure that everybody's okay and comfortable with the direction that we're headed.
So one quick question. If we get a license or a lease, is there going to be like a monthly rental fee that we will be paying the city, or is, is there, we just have it for the period of time that the city no longer needs it?
Likely not. It would likely be no cost.
All right. Aside from paving it, would we be able to fence it?
Well, we'll, we'll discuss all that, all right? As, as we get to that point, we'll discuss all those terms.
Okay.
Shannon, is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
And so there would be nothing to rebut at this point. So I will close the public hearing. And counsel, let me lead off. My thought is, I would like to, I guess, follow staff's lead. There's a high likelihood that this will not be needed in the future, but it would be imprudent, in my opinion, to go ahead and grant a vacation if, in fact, this is something that may be needed down the road. If we could accommodate the Bushes by setting up some kind of a licensing agreement, it would accomplish what they would like. You know, in theory, you're looking to acquire additional property to help the business, and I don't just have any issues with that. But, you know, the property could be sold, number one, or we could grant the licensing, which would hopefully accomplish what you want. So I, in my opinion, I'll listen to counsel's comment, but I would be, at this point, not in favor of the vacation, but working an agreement with them to allow them the use for which they need. Joe?
I would agree with that also. I think we should at least explore what the options are for a license. And if that works out for all parties involved, great. And if it doesn't, we can revisit a vacation. But I think we can take a look at this option and see if that serves everybody's purpose.
Good. Linda, you want to comment?
I, I agree. I, I agree that, I would agree that the license right now would be a good alternative, but that the vacation is premature, just like staff says.
Counselors on Zoom, anyone wishing to add comment?
I like the license agreement issue.
So do I.
I like that too, but I think that we should perhaps have a time, they say in five years, whatever, revisit it. And I don't know how you do a licensing, but I don't know if there's a, a timeframe on it.
Those details will now be worked out.
Yeah.
Steve, any comment?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm on board with the license, but I, I do think we should keep, the city should keep the easement on the property for future use if they need to.
I entertain a motion.
I would move to direct staff to bring back a license for the use of the property on Cecil Road.
And deny the, the vacation?
And deny the vacation. File number VACA-0005-2020.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The staff will be in, in contact with you to try to get all the details worked out. You're on mute.
I can't hear you.
You're muted.
I don't know if she has control of it or not.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. Could I find out what the timeframe will be? The trailer company was wanting to know about when, or if, we're going to be able to use that additional land. When will I be hearing from the staff?
So we'll reach out in the next couple of days. It'll probably take us a couple of weeks to put something together.
But they'll touch base with you over the next couple of days.
Okay. All right. And it is regarding a lease as opposed to the vacate?
No, a license, not a lease.
License. Okay. All right. Okay, a license. All right. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
I appreciate your time. Merry Christmas.
You too. Next item up tonight is unfinished business, and we have none, followed by new business, which is the purchase of real property at 1658 West Lundie with Life Estate. Mr. Beecham?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Are you able to see my presentation?
We are.
All right. I am John Beecham, the Public Works Director for the city, and here today to talk about a, kind of an interesting property purchase proposal. My slides are not advancing fun. Here we go. Zoom fun, right? So talk a little bit about the property itself and then what the process would look like if we move forward. This is a zoomed-out view of Post Falls. Our sewer outfall is located where the Red Arrow meets the Spokane River, and the property we're talking about is also in the same location. This is a set of plans for an outfall upgrade. It was mentioned in the staff memo. This is intended to be constructed next summer, in summer of 2021. And the property under discussion is this household right here. You can see the irrigated grass. That's kind of their yard, and then this is a steep bank that goes down to the river. This is the actual parcel itself that we're looking at purchasing. And if you can follow my arrow along our outfall, it comes through here at an angle, and angles down along the property line. As history, the first easement was in about the 1984 timeframe, when the water reclamation facility was built. A second easement was expanded in 2014. That's what allows us to do this project in next summer. What that easement provided us with is a construction easement over just about half of their property. That gives us a place to park a crane, to get down into the river. So any of the work here is pretty major, requires pretty major equipment. This was the minimum easement it was thought we needed in order to do the 2021 outfall upgrade. And the reason I mention that is this single-hatched easement will go away after that construction project. So we retain the crosshatch permanent easement, but lose this single hatch construction easement. So we have a one-time easement right now for the construction of next summer's project, but we don't have a guarantee into the future on access for that area. So the proposal would be to purchase that parcel for $415,000 from the current owners, and to write into that construction and to that purchase agreement that they would retain a life estate that allows those owners, and only those owners, to continue living in that residence until such time as they're no longer able to contain it and they wish to move out, or if they pass away, it would basically come to the city for full ownership and possession. Our, under our proposal, nothing really changes for the 2021 construction. We would assume they're still in that house. We'd keep the contractors basically to the same easements. There are alternatives to this. Like I mentioned, we don't need it today. We need it probably 20, or 30, or 40 years from now. So there are options. We can utilize the existing easements. They're wide enough. We could potentially make a repair to the pipe if something happened to it. But that's a potential, not a guarantee. We could attempt to purchase this property if and when the current owners place it on the market. They've indicated verbally that they might do so in the spring. Obviously, things can change over the course of six months. And we can also hold off and just attempt to purchase either an easement, a future construction easement, or the property itself, when and if it's ever needed. This would, the outfall upgrade we're constructing is likely to get us through at least my career and hopefully my successor's career, be a ways out there. The, the flip side of that is, what is on this property when that need occurs might be something drastically harder to work around than the structure that's there today. In terms of a process, right now, we've kind of agreed to a cost. I shouldn't say we've agreed. The owners have agreed to a cost. The city thinks, the city staff think that number's pretty reasonable. But we're talking about terms of a purchase from here. If we get direction from council to move forward with it, we would prepare the actual contract documents for the sale of the life estate, and then bring that back to you for formal approval at that time with all the terms and conditions worked out. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions? John? Al, go ahead.
John, I got a few questions. Number one, did we pay anything for a construction, for that construction easement?
We did. I don't have the value of that today. I want to say it was something like $5,000, though.
Well, I just feel like we're going to, if we go down this road, we're paying for that twice.
We, we effectively are. We, we have permission to be there in 2021. So this would be for, call it a 2050 construction project.
Yeah. Next question, is the 415, is that like a, is that a, a cost? Do we get any kind of benefit for giving them the, the life estate?
Certainty is probably the best benefit to that. They could seek an appraisal and put it on the market for what they feel it's worth. The neighboring property, which has a little bit larger house, maybe not kept up as well, and, but stick frame house, I think, sold for about $450,000, so similar size without river access. So it's, it's in the ballpark. Zillow puts the property, I looked it up today, if I might note, at $410,000, so.
Okay. Well, I just felt like if we're going to pay market value for it, why would we then turn around and give them a life estate? I mean, if they're giving us a deal, you know, a screaming deal on it, and they want to live there for I mean, if they're giving us a deal, you know, a screaming deal on it, and they want to live there for the next ten years or whatever, well, that's a different subject. Last question. If we were to buy this property, could we somehow scratch out enough property that we would want to keep and then turn around and sell, you know, the house and what property we don't need? I just don't like the idea of us sitting on a four hundred thousand dollar piece of property for the next twenty, thirty years.
Uh, possibly. You saw in that easement map, the hatched out area portion of the parcel. So it's, I would say it's about half the parcel, and it's the river half that we would need to keep. So we, we might be able to come up with, say, a quarter or a third of an acre, um, that could be sold.
Well, would we rent the house down the road? I mean, so let's just say, you know, they live there for the next ten years. We don't need it for the next twenty years. What do we do with that house for the, the ten years until we need it? We rent it?
There, there's precedence for renting houses. Uh, we have a house on Hayden Avenue on the land application property that we rent. So that brings in, it's, brings in the rent revenue, but it costs us a little bit in maintenance too, so, as you would know with the property.
Yeah. I think that's all I've got. I just wanted, like to hear what the rest of the counselors have to say.
Thanks, Al. And my thought is, I hate to be purchasing property to sit on, like Al says, for possibly twenty to thirty, forty years. However, uh, if you buy a real property, if history is any indication, that's going to go up in value. If we're good, if we're getting a decent price on it right now, uh, or a price that we feel is competitive, you know, it's, it's a, I guess you could view it as a long-term investment. I could, I could go either way on it, but I, I do like the certainty, uh, of, of knowing. I would hate to get to the point that we need to make some improvements down the road. Council's after ourselves and not have access to it and have to negotiate at that point. So if we purchase that, I don't believe it's, I just throw money out there. We're getting a hard asset for it that has true value, so uh, that, that's my take. I, I'm not opposed to the purchase for those reasons, but how about council for the comments? Joe?
I got.
Just one sec, Steve. Joe?
I, I've been torn on this one too. I, I tend to agree with the mayor that the property value is not gonna, if it ever does go down, it's not gonna be by much, and it's not gonna be for very long. Um, I, I think a bedrock of civilized society is keeping human waste far away from human activity. So it's probably the, the most important thing we do as a city is, is, is the wastewater treatment plant and the water provisions. Uh, I believe there are or could be opportunities to use that property for other purposes, whether as council or Wolf suggested renting the house for a little bit of, uh, of income back in, or, you know, I'm sure Dave Farrar could find something to do with it. But there are probably opportunities, particularly at that location right on the water, uh, that we could, we could use to serve the city's citizens at, at little or no cost also. And if we try to buy that property thirty years from now, holy smokes, uh, that's, that's gonna be crazy. So I, as much as I hate to spend that much money now, uh, being that it's for the reclamation plant, which is probably the most important thing we do, I, I think I'm in favor of it.
Thanks, Joe. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was for John. Um, probably this wasn't a budgeted item. Is there any projects you have to put off in the future to, uh, purchase this property for this amount, or is this a fund that you kind of have set aside just to buy property if it comes up?
Uh, I'll answer that as quickly as possible and give you an update on our outfall project at the same time. So we had looked at coupling the outfall project with boring a pipeline under the river to connect to the community forest on the other side for reuse. Uh, when we got into design and, uh, with the assistance of our, uh, contractor that we brought on board to help with the constructability of it, there's really no reason to do those at the same time. We, there's no financial benefit to us, really. It's different contractors who would do the work. So our plan is no longer to bore under the river this coming summer, which, uh, so that was a budgeted expense that we will not be incurring, so that's the project that we give postponed.
Okay. And, and I guess my thoughts are, I'm kind of with Al. I don't want to spend the money for the property, but things could change, say, in the, uh, in your field in the future, and then maybe that property could be used for recreational use at some time. And so I, I think the chance to get property that does border the river, there's not very much of it left. And plus, you never know. If you do need it down the future, bigger easement, you'd have it. So I think I kind of lean more towards purchasing the property.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Any other comments?
I, I would lean towards the, the purchase. It, never going to lose money on it, you know, even if we end up selling it. At some point, some other people on the council ended up selling it, um, it's never going to be a loss. It's, it's not a gamble when you've got that property there on the river, whether it got used for parks or, or whatever. But yeah, I don't know that you're gonna find, like Steve said, they're not making property with river access anymore.
Thank you.
I understand that, but at the same time, it's not, I don't think the city wants to be investing in property. I, again, I'm just a little bit cautious on this one.
Yeah, I, I would agree, Al. I don't think we, I don't want to be a city that builds up a huge land bank. Uh, but again, I think until we see this project through and see what happens, uh, like I said, I'm not opposed to it. It would be nice if we didn't have to do it, but I still don't think we're gonna lose on it. But I appreciate your thoughts and position on it. I don't disagree at all.
I, I think also it's not an investment in the property itself, but in the, in the future of the treatment plant. I don't think that, if, if we need that property for the outfall in the future, it's not gonna get any cheaper.
And if we don't need it, we can sell it.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would be my opinion. And the price that the city is paying for it, in my opinion, would be, um, a reasonable price, and the life estate doesn't seem like it's going to be for a very long time in the future. So that being said, I would move to approve the purchase of the real property at sixteen fifty-eight West Lundie with a life estate.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wellhum?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next item up tonight is, uh, under administrative staff reports. We're gonna get, we're going to receive an up, uh, date from Jason on the CARES Act grant funds.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. I was before you a couple of months ago to talk about some grant funds that the city received from the state called the CARES Act. We received one point one nine million dollars, and we had broke them up over two fiscal periods to spend. First, last, uh, last fiscal period, we were appropriating seven, uh, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty. And in fiscal year twenty-one, we've appropriated four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars for, for spending additional dollars. What I had put in your council packet is basically a life-to-date of what we have spent on it so far. City has spent two hundred and thirty-five hundred thousand, and we have received so far reimbursement of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Some of the items we wanted to, I broke out, gave a little example of what, what we've purchased with this money, because what we have purchased is, as a city, will be on their website, so I want to give the council a heads up on what we have submitted for reimbursement and what we've paid for, what we have received as well. Um, of course, first right out of the bat, we had purchased some fencing for parks to isolate playground equipment. The IT department has also purchased servers and computers for anybody that wanted to work remotely, and extra backup for the addition down the, uh, server room. One thing that we offered our customers was instead of coming online and paying in person with a credit card, we have offered, uh, to remove those fees for the credit cards, uh, for utility billing, and we were reimbursed for those fees. So so far in, um, you did, um, so far for utility billing, we have, um, uh, been reimbursed fifty thousand dollars for, um, not, the customer not paying the credit card fees, but like, like they did before. So to remove that, we kind of encouraged them to pay online. So we did receive those, uh, those additional monies. We have some, uh, we have submitted some salaries, and we also have submitted a, um, there's a playground equipment that the, the parks department purchased to sterilize playground equipment, and also that could be used later on for, um, maintaining weeds in the parks, and we received reimbursement of that as well. So this isn't the last time you'll see me about the CARES Act, because we have till the end of the month to request reimbursement for any items that we spend, but, um, on the bottom, we had bought some hand sanitizers, so that's what the, the descriptions are pretty clear, except for the last part where it says wellness program. Well, that was the, the wellness fund that paid for them, so to get reimbursement back, that's where it came from, was wellness. So that was, if that's hand sanitizer that the city purchased, so. Um, let's look at here. Out of the one point one nine million, we haven't, sure hasn't spent a lot, so, um, we still have a ways to go before we max out the rest of that, so I'm, uh, asking for any questions you might have.
Any questions, Jason?
Al, go ahead.
Jason, have you checked with any other cities to find out some of the other expenses that they may have gotten reimbursed for, just so that we don't miss out on any opportunities?
Yeah, I was, uh, talking with Coeur d'Alene and also in, in Rathrum, and a lot of the stuff that they're purchasing are things that we already had, was we had laptops and we had, uh, computers. They were buying additional. We had bought additional as well, but, um, we don't really have as many purchases as they did. We had, we already had enough on hand, so, um, and we did look at that.
Does this, the money that we didn't spend, does it go back to the state or go back to the fence?
So it's gonna come to us. Um, Councilor Wolf, we will be submitting in the next week under a order that came out from the governor. It's not an order, but a memo, um, from the governor's office that came out that's gonna allow us to reimburse under our, um, public safety payroll. So we will be able to submit and spend down the balance of the, um, one point one nine four million dollars.
That's great news.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issues, and this is the section of the agenda that is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. And I believe we have one tonight. Please come forward and name for the record, please. Shannon, do we have anybody else?
Just the one.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jeanette Laster, and I'm the Executive Director of the Human Rights Education Institute, located in downtown Coeur d'Alene. And our mission is to celebrate diversity in human rights by educating, raising awareness, and recognizing the value of all humanity. We served twenty-two thousand students this last year, and our service areas, Eastern Washington, Northern Idaho, and Western Montana. And I wish I was here today to talk to you about wonderful programs and offerings of HREI, but unfortunately, I'm not today. Um, many of you are aware of the professional-looking banners that were placed along I ninety with the message of no white guilt. We know, uh, we now know that those signs, um, were hung on bridges and post falls in Spokane and within the community of Spokane, as well as one on the State Railway Bridge in St. Mary's. Law enforcement immediately took action to remove the signs, and on behalf of HREI and the community, we would like to personally thank our Post Falls Police Department for getting them down so quickly. They have no place in our community. Um, it is our understanding that these signs were not legally placed. A few months ago, HREI received some images and communications that these signs were being promoted for sale on social media in preparation for a national white warriors hate campaign. An anticipated, and, an anticipated date was not shared with the information. At the heart of this campaign is a telegram Nazi, Christopher Palouse, I believe is how you pronounce his name, AKA The Hammer. In the documents I have provided, I have shared information about him, the symbolism around his name, and the messaging about his group. The language from the banners can be traced back to him, of course. The words "no white guilt" may be misinterpreted by some of our citizens as an anti-shaming campaign in support of white people in the wake of BLM protests. However, the creation of these signs and the hate campaign were a calculated attempt to share white supremacy i- ideology in our community and other communities throughout the nation, even down to the colors selected on the banner of red, black, and white, which represent the colors of Nazi symbols in Germany during the reign of Hitler. I want to emphasize that these are not good people, and followers, our followers are close. Social media makes that possible. Whether they subscribe to the full ideology or just the message of standing up for white people presented at face value, it is our children, especially our, a young adult male population, that is most vulnerable to this type of recruitment. Furthermore, this message is a form of oppression and intimidation, and it is not welcome here in North Idaho. Outside of the investigations by our law enforcement, I ask that we, as community leaders, ensure that we send a clear and strong message that displays of hate symbols and racism are not welcome here. And in order to root out these individuals and groups that may be hiding in our community, we must create a strong counterbalance in the fabric of our community that shares a message of solidarity, love, kindness, and acceptance for all of our neighbors and friends. I also want to briefly speak about the I, the HREI philosophy around white guilt. I will state clearly that there is a difference between empathetic, being empathetic to BLM protests and incidences of Black, Indigenous, or other people of colors lived experiences of oppression, whether currently happening or in history, and white shaming, which we don't subscribe to either. Guilt in general is often associated with a crime or in theology, a sin, but in actuality, what we may be feeling is remorse, excuse me, remorse, anger, or sadness for ourselves or for someone else or for a situation. At HREI, our social worker team members always work to bring students and community members to a place of exploring truth and reconciliation, as feeling guilty does not lend itself to promoting problem-solving. Opening our hearts and listening, understanding, and supporting change in a compassionate way is essential to our process of education that we work with our, in our students. And with that said, I would like to thank you again for allowing me to be here, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions, Jeanette? Seeing none. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me.
Next item up is mayor and council comments, and I've got a couple of things. First of all, Madison from the press, I want to thank you for your work that you did on Thanksgiving. I, uh, loved the fact that I spoke with her earlier today, and she spent Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day working, uh, visiting all the different, uh, locations and, and organizations that were offering free food, so thanks, thanks for that. I think it was very helpful that you got that information out ahead of time, and you followed up with the story. I appreciate that. Uh, second, uh, I've been told by our staff that we're receiving a lot of, uh, emails, comments, phone calls, asking why Post Falls did not participate in the property tax relief through the, uh, state of Idaho and the CARES funding. And the reason we did that, and staff has done a very good job explaining that to people, is in the federal, uh, laws, I read it, the, the guidelines, federally says that money cannot be used or could not be used for property tax relief. And our concern was that if we were to accept this money, take this money, and then find out down the road that it was in fact illegal, we would have to go back to our citizens to reimburse that. So I think we took the conservative and the proper approach to that. Uh, I know not all cities, uh, agreed, and that's fine, but just so everyone knows, that's why we opted not to take the funds. Um, and third, I, just a question. I don't need an answer tonight, but I've noticed again driving over that the lights on the fountains on the freeway are still not lit. So, uh, I know it's been that way for quite some time, and again, not, I don't need an answer, but I just thought I better mention it because I was going to forget if I didn't, so, thank you. Counsel comments. Al, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, I know we got a, an email from the state late today regarding the, uh, public safety funds, and I don't know if those, is that the same? I'm not sure what that is. So I was hoping that maybe, uh, Shelley could.
Yeah, that's what she had referred to. Go ahead, Shelley.
Yes, uh, Councilor Wolf, so there's two different issues with the property tax relief program and then just the direct reimbursement from CARES Act fund. The direct reimbursement from CARES Act fund is allowed under the federal legislation. The property tax replacement was not. That was additional money above the one point one nine four that was allocated to the city and was a direct replacement of revenue for the city, and that's why it violated the legislation. This reimbursement does not violate the legislation because it's not replacing property tax or any other revenue source. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, for the, well, I, I guess we, you've answered it, yeah. Between you and the mayor, I know where we're going.
Between you and the mayor, I know where we're going.
Good, let us know, would you please?
Yeah, and just, you know, shoot me an email if you, if in the middle of the night you have another question about it, just shoot me an email and warn and I will make sure that we get your response.
Well, I guess what I was, maybe I can clarify what I'm thinking is it made me feel like they had gotten clarification from the feds that yes, that money that some of the state or some of the cities and the counties had opted to take was now legit.
No, so again, it, it has to do with, and Warren, I'll let Warren jump in.
Okay.
So councillor, the, the state did get some additional clarification from the feds that answered one of the three questions about the property tax program. And the feds issued, um, some guidance that essentially said, if you're using your, the, the funds for salary replacement for your public safety people in the interest of convenience, because it's, it'd be really difficult to document how many hours were specifically spent on COVID versus something else, that they would consider all of the public safety hours essentially as reimbursable. Um, there was another question that wasn't answered and, and the fed essentially said, we think it's a good program, but we're not gonna put it in writing because it violates the law. And that is essentially the, the provision that said you couldn't use those funds to replace property tax dollars. So it did answer one of the questions, it didn't answer another one. If that makes sense.
You okay, Al?
Yeah, no, that sounds good. I just didn't wanna, I didn't want us to miss out on something with, you know, if we now found out that, uh, what we considered to be illegal or that we shouldn't have, you know, that we did miss out on some money that we should have gotten.
Right.
So it doesn't sound like we did. We stuck with what we did.
Thanks.
And if you read the, uh, property tax insert letter that came, mo- the majority of the agencies did not take the money. So when you looked at the list, I don't have it in front of me, I could look it up real quick, but the list of, of agencies who chose not to do the property tax replacement far outweighed the agencies that did.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Okay, I wanted to, for the rec, uh, recreation department, with so many things over the last months, um, just getting canceled because everything changes. The easy thing to do is to cancel an event. The hard thing to do is to get creative and figure out a way to still make it happen. So what is happening, um, Friday? The city with the drive-through and all of that, um, a- and the same thing, they did it with Halloween also. I just, I, I'm, I'm very impressed. I'm, I'm impressed with the enthusiasm and the creativity under difficult circumstances to try to find something that works. And so it hasn't happened yet. I'm sure it'll be wonderful. I'm gonna drive through, um, but, so applause for everyone there in the recreation and parks department. And also the holiday and heroes program is another one that doesn't look anything at all like it has for many years. The kids aren't going to the Greyhound park and there aren't gonna be the secret shoppers and all of that. But, um, in talking to Captain, oh my goodness, um, anyways, yeah, Mealer, Captain Mealer, uh, the other day, the really important part of that program is happening. And that is, is that the children and their families visited by police officers and firefighters and all of those people, um, at their homes. And they're going to receive the gifts and the, the, the food items and all of the things that they would have. So the event itself doesn't look the same, but the heart of the program, um, is still happening. And that is due to postal police, all of the law enforcement and first responders that are, um, that have always made that happen. So that, it makes me happy, even if it doesn't look the same. The substance and heart of holidays and heroes will be happening this weekend. The magic will happen. It's Christmas, so.
Thanks, Carrie. Chief, did you wanna make a comment on that? Are you okay? Okay. Uh, Steve or Lynn, did you have something?
Yeah, good. I'm wondering if we could get our engineering department to look at the timing on the street lights on Spokane Street again. Um, the, the last few weeks, I've been driving periodically up and down there, but the traffic gets backed up into Selti's Way right now from the light at Mullen. And, uh, then coming southbound even tonight, uh, the left-hand turn lane to get onto the freeway is backed up, clear up to the intersection of the freeway off ramp. And the cars that are in the inside lane can't get around them. And somebody's pulling out there, we're gonna have a crash or two or three there before it's over. Um, it, it's just, we're getting more and more traffic and it's getting backed up. And it's, it's partially due to the time of day. That, that was about four thirty today, so.
I see staff on, on the screen, Lynn, so I'm sure they will, uh, take a look at it and we'll get an update. Bill, go ahead.
Nope, was just gonna say that we'll be taking a look at that, uh, real quickly here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Linda?
I just wanna remind everybody that the chamber is going to move forward with the Tiny Tree Festival as well. Little bit different than normal. It will be a virtual auction, so everybody buy your ten dollar ticket to be able to bid on the tiny trees. That's, uh, starts on Saturday and Sunday. The trees will be online on Friday. And be sure to bid on my tree. It will be, baby, it's cold outside. So thank you, everybody, for your participation.
Thank you, Linda.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. I'll be very brief, I promise. Um, no concerns in the police department. Just wanna give a couple of shout-outs of thank you during this time. You know, we're coming to the end of, uh, twenty twenty, which I think we're all happy to see the end of. Um, but here we are in our final month of a year that we all want to get behind us. And, um, you know, tomorrow night at four thirty at the police department, uh, we'll be lighting up the police department again, um, in a good way. Um, the short green from, uh, Shane and Lisa Anderson for the third year now have come through and have been at their police department off and on for the last couple of weeks with their crews, donating their time, donating their money and making sure that that police department is lit up and decorated. And, uh, so tomorrow at four thirty, we're gonna, we're gonna light the lights on and, uh, en- enjoy this holiday season. And we'll do it with masks and social distancing, but we wanna make sure that we do something for this event. Um, and the other thing was, this is our twenty-first year with holidays and heroes, much like, uh, councillor Thorson was mentioning as well. And, uh, we couldn't do it without this community. Uh, here we are, their second year in a row, we're not gonna turn away a single family. And that happens, uh, just because the community we live in. Uh, the donations continue to come in tomorrow, spending, uh, two or three routes, uh, running around the town, collecting checks as well, uh, from people who just called to say, hey, what can we do to help? How do we make sure that a family is not missed? And so, um, tonight, I just wanna say thank you. A shout-out to the, to the community that we live in, uh, folks much like yourselves that donate to the program every year. And, uh, once again, we won't have a family go without, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We do not need an executive session now.
We do not, sir.
Next motion is.
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.